The Palm Springs City Council meeting of December 10, 2020 to order. For those who are able and would like to join us, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be read by City Manager David Reddy.
(Inaudible)
I think they already finished.
Oh, yeah, we can't hear them.
That's okay.
I couldn't hear them. Thank you. City Clerk, please conduct a roll call.
Councilmember Garner.
Present.
Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Councilmember Woods.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Holsteg.
Here.
Mayor Coors.
Here.
All council is present.
Great. Thank you. The next item is public comment on presentation items only. This time it's been set aside for members of the public to address the City Council on presentations. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker.
Mr. Mayor? We have no public comment for this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So our first presentation is certification of the 2020 election results. Staff report, please.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, the City Council has requested to adopt a resolution declaring that Kristi Gilbert Holsteg and Lisa Middleton were elected to the offices of member of Palm Springs City Council for Districts 4 and 5, respectively, for terms ending December 2024, and I'm available for any questions.
Do we have any questions for the city clerk? Any discussion? Okay. Is there a motion to certify the election results?
I move.
There was a motion by Councilmember Garner, seconded by Councilmember Woods.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Holsteg.
Yes.
Mayor Coors.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
The next item is the oath of office ceremony. At this time, the city clerk will administer the oath of office to Kristi Gilbert Holsteg, Councilmember representing District 4, and Lisa Middleton, Councilmember representing District 5.
I, Lisa Middleton, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause) Kristi Gilbert Holsteg.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
(Applause)
Okay. The next item is appointment of the mayor and mayor pro tem. Staff report, please.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, in accordance with Resolution Number 24593, the City Council is requested to confirm the appointment of Kristi Gilbert Holsteg to the position of mayor and Lisa Middleton to the position of mayor pro tem for a one-year term commencing upon appointment, and I'm available for any questions.
Great. Any council member have any questions or comments? Okay. Seeing none, is there a motion?
I so move.
A second? Okay. Motion by Councilmember Garner, seconded by Councilmember Woods.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods. Oh, you were on mute.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tim Holsteg.
Yes.
And Mayor Coors.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you very much. So we have remarks from council. So first, I would like to thank profusely our former mayor now, Jeff Coors, for his dedicated service to the city of Palm Springs over the last year. We faced, as we all know, an unprecedented crisis, and I can think of no better mayor to serve us through that year than Jeff Coors. He really has been incredibly dedicated every single day to the residents and keeping us safe. You've delved into the details of every single order. You have talked to the state and advocated for our community. It's been incredible to serve with you as the mayor pro tem during that time, and you have left big shoes to fill. So thank you on behalf of the entire council and city staff for all of your dedicated, hard work, keeping us safe and truly saving lives during this past year. So we are incredibly grateful for you and your time. So any, I'll move to any other council comments, and then I'll move to Mayor Pro Tim Middleton and my comments. But would anyone on council like to make comments at this time? I assume our outgoing mayor would like to.
Sure. And thank you, Mayor Holsteg, which has a really nice ring to it. So first, I want to congratulate Mayor Holsteg and Councilmember Middleton, who is now Mayor Pro Tim Middleton, we'll get used to that, on these appointments. They both have been tremendous leaders on this council and for our communities. And, you know, it's been 80 years, long overdue, but we now have our first female mayor and first bisexual mayor in the country, our first transgender mayor pro tem. And so it's an exciting time. And I just want to, one, wish them the best in these roles. And, you know, being the first mayor going into the rotation, although COVID obviously changed a lot of the things, you know, I got to focus on, one of the real important things was to make sure that our system worked the way our charter describes it, where the mayor may be the main spokesperson, but we're five equal members. And I hope that was accomplished this year because we have five very strong, passionate council members who love the city. And I really want to thank everyone on council and staff who have so stepped up this year because it's been a challenging year for our residents, our businesses, workers. And I'm just proud of all the work we all did as a team. So mostly, I just wanted to congratulate our new mayor, Mayor Pro Tem. I look forward to continuing the great work. You know, it might be my sixth year on council, but this is first time after an election. It's the same group of people. And I think it's been, you know, a little challenging, I'm sure, for our two newest members in that we're not together as much in person. But I really am proud of the work we've done as a team and really look forward to your leadership, Mayor Holsteg. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make comments? Go ahead. Councilmember Garner.
Thank you, Mayor Holsteg. I'm very excited for this upcoming year, and I want to give a huge congratulations to our new mayor and mayor pro tem. You both have been such incredible leaders on council, and I am very glad that we will have the same group moving forward as we figure out a lot of different challenges that the city faces. I think this continuity is excellent, and I think that having Mayor Holsteg's leadership is going to be great, too. I think one of the wonderful things about having districts is that we are getting these new voices every year. Even though we've got the same group, having a new mayor is going to change the dynamics, and I think it will change them in a good way and be, you know, it is, it's one of those things where we all have different leadership styles. And Mayor Coors had a different leadership style than Mayor Holsteg, and I'm just very excited for these different transitions and what's to come in the next few years as well. So congratulations to both of you, and I'm very, very happy.
Thank you. Councilmember Woods.
First of all, congratulations to our mayor and our mayor pro tem, congratulations on the reelection campaign and moving into mayor and mayor pro tem. I also want to give, and I've done this before, but give just a major congratulations and admiration to Jeff Coors, who, as a mayor, through one of the hardest times that I can imagine this city might have ever been through, except for maybe the recession way back, and this is even more difficult because there were lives at stake, stepped up immediately with no hesitation and filled the shoes to protect its citizens and to protect us and get us everything that we needed to get through this pandemic. And even with the pandemic, he showed leadership in other areas. He didn't just solely focus on the pandemic. And for that, I really am grateful to have worked with Jeff Coors, as well as the other council members on this, and I thank everybody.
Thank you. I'll turn to our newly elected mayor, Pro Tim Middleton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I start with some of my own comments, I want to recognize someone on some outstanding achievement, and that's our city clerk, Anthony Mahia. Anthony joined the city three years ago and has evolved in his role ever since while leading the districting process by coordinating and attending numerous community meetings and ensuring public outreach to the Latino community through accessibility of translated documents and handling two successful elections. He was also busy in the City Clerks Association of California, which serves over 1,050 clerks statewide. Tonight, we recognize Anthony for his professional achievements. Anthony was the recipient of the California City Clerks Association of California Award of Distinction for Organization, Administration, and Communication. He has served as the Regional Director for Los Angeles County and was named City Clerk of the Year for Southern California. I want to take a moment to thank Anthony for being a positive role model to everyone in our city and congratulate him on his new appointment as the City Clerks Association of California President for the upcoming year. Anthony, congratulations.
Thank you.
So with that, I want to thank first and foremost the people of the city of Palm Springs, the Fifth District, for giving me an opportunity to continue to serve. I want to thank all of the staff of the city of Palm Springs, each and every employee. Your professionalism, your expertise, your devotion to our city is something that we all admire and appreciate. I thank my colleagues on City Council. Each and every one of you bring a breadth of your talent, the commitment to service, and the strength of so many varied voices that make our city so strong. And most importantly, I want to thank my family. Without their love and their support, what it takes to do this job would not be possible. We are in the midst of a terrible year and some very trying times in our country. We are approaching 300,000 dead. Decades of argument and debate and disagreement have not brought us any closer as a people or a country. Far too many in our country doubt the fairness of our institutions. And I doubt the fairness of being able to turn the page. But I am heartened by the over 160 million Americans who voted in November. We, in this time of trial, renewed our commitment to who we are as a people. I am particularly proud of the people of Palm Springs. 26,272 votes were cast by residents and citizens of Palm Springs. That's an 89.56% turnout of the residents in our city, an incredible amount of commitment. In my district, the Fifth District, 92% of the people voted, over 6,000 votes were cast. Our job is to make the city work for everyone, whether you voted for us or not. Municipal government is the most accessible form of government. You have our phone numbers, you have our emails, you stop us in line at the post office, you pull us aside in the aisles of the grocery store and tell us what you think and what we should do. That is what we signed up for, and actually, we kind of like it. Lastly, I want to single out two of my colleagues, our outgoing mayor, Jeff Coors, who in an unexpected and unprecedented year led this council with warmth, energy, and thoughtfulness. It was a time when leadership mattered, and you showed it. To our incoming mayor, Kristi Holsteg, who makes history as the first woman in our 82-year history to hold the title mayor of the city of Palm Springs, you earned it. And I know I speak for each and every one of our colleagues that we look forward to serving with you as you set a new example of what leadership looks like in the city of Palm Springs. Thank you.
deserves claps, I think. I've campaigned twice with Mayor Pro Tim Middleton at the same time and served with you on City Council for three years, and I haven't learned not to follow you because it's very difficult every single time. Thank you. This is a historic moment for our city, truly, to wait 82 years for a female mayor. That means we've gone 82 years without having a woman represent us as mayor, and it's not about me, though, you know, that will be some of the headlines, but really the women who built this city. And women have been leading and building this city for over 82 years. There's a photo in the city clerk's office in City Hall of women running a polling place in Palm Springs, really in the dirt, before women had the right to vote. So that's the leadership of women in this city. And I wanted to do a PowerPoint presentation just really quickly. Thank you to Denise Schoolsby and Amy Blaisdell from the city staff who helped put this together along with the Palm Springs Historical Society. But just want to go through just a few of the women who built this town. So we all know Nellie Kaufman, who founded the Desert Inn, a world-class, first-class hotel, which really changed and set the foundation for tourism that drives our economy today. Next, we have Pearl McManus, who opened Pioneer Properties in Palm Springs. And I love this. She was the president, and her husband was her secretary, and that was in the 1920s. You have Zadie Bunker. Her and her husband opened Bunker's Garage in 1914. She purchased property, investing and reinvesting in Palm Springs. She was the first woman to receive a chauffeur's license in the state of California, earned her pilot's license at the age of 65. Ruth Hardy, who we all know, who purchased the Ingleside Inn in 1935, and she became the city's first councilwoman in 1948. And she used the campaign to plant the palm trees that would line Palm Canyon and still do today. We have Melba Bennett, who started the Palm Springs Historical Society as an auxiliary unit of the Wellwood Murray Library. We have Viola Ortner, who in 1954 was a member of the Agua Caliente Band of Quea Indians, and she was elected chairwoman of the first all-female tribal council. So the tribe beat us many, many decades having female leadership. She went to Washington to convince Congress the tribe had the right to long-term leases, and in 1980, she was elected to the Palm Springs City Council. We have Cornelia White, who we all know through the Cornelia White House, who was a prominent pioneer. And we have Cora Crawford, who was a leader in childhood education, a leader in her community. She moved to Palm Springs from Texas in the 1950s. She settled in Section 14 before being moved when Section 14 was raised, and she started again in the Desert Highland Gateway Estates around 1960s. She's an incredible leader, who many of us have been honored to know her and her family. And so early city council history makers. We went over the first women on city council. In 1958, Mary Carlin was 29 when she was elected as the city's youngest councilwoman. And of course, our long-term councilwomen with staying power. So we have Dana Hodges, who served on the Palm Springs City Council, 1990 to 2004, and of course, Ginny Foat, who served from 2003 to 2017. For 14 years, she was the only woman on city council. So as you can see, then we move into our present day, our first woman of the Palm Springs City Council. So in 2017, Lisa and I were elected in doubled representation of women, and she was also elected the first transgender woman elected to the city council and the highest elected official in the state. In 2019, we had Grace Garner, the first Latina ever elected. And then in 2019, we achieved our first all-female majority on city council, and then now our first female mayor. And I think that's important to go over because women and men and everyone altogether have really built a beautiful city that we are so honored to serve every single day. And, you know, I'll just say briefly, you know, we've made significant progress, but we have a long way to go for our community and to ensure equal and equitable participation from all members of our community. I know that this city council is committed to making sure that all voices are heard in the city of Palm Springs, that everyone has a seat at the table and actually can lead that table. And we will continue to build a stronger and more diverse democracy to make better decisions by considering everyone's point of view and continue to work every day for our city. So I'm incredibly humbled by the voters and the residents of District Four and the city of Palm Springs. Like Lisa, my district, she has me beat, but we had 91% voter turnout, which is just incredible. I think we can prove that we have the most engaged residents here in the city of Palm Springs. I want to thank my family, my parents, and my husband, and our newborn baby, Aiden, who's crying during the ceremony. And I'll just say, we face a difficult and challenging year. We are in the midst of a public health crisis, an economic crisis, growing inequality in our city, housing and homelessness crisis, and a climate crisis, just to name a few. But we will get through it together. We have an incredible city council that I'm honored to work with. Everyone is so committed to the residents and the people of this city, and I know that there is light at the end of the tunnel. We have a difficult year with difficult decisions, but we will come out stronger and better than ever. And Palm Springs brand and our community is so strong, and we will continue to make progress, just like women have been doing for over 80 years in the city of Palm Springs. So thank you for the opportunity to serve, and I'd like to share this with my colleagues on City Council. As Jeff Mayor Coors says, we have equal responsibilities on the city council, and we all represent our districts and our community, and we come together to represent the city. So thank you very much for the opportunity to serve, and I look forward to this year together. Next, we have a presentation of a proclamation to Perry Madison, Director of our Human Resources in the city of Palm Springs. in the city of Palm Springs. Thank you. Okay. "Whereas, Perry Madison started his career with the city of Palm Springs on December thirtieth, two thousand seven, in the Department of Human Resources as Human Resources and Benefits Supervisor, rising to the position of Director of Human Resources in June two thousand ten. And whereas, as Director of Human Resources, Perry provided essential oversight of the city's human resources programs, including administration, classification, and compensation benefits, employee relations, labor negotiations, employment services, leave management, workers' compensation and safety, training and education, reporting and auditing, and other human resources management programs." Fix my mask, if you don't mind. "And whereas, Perry has achieved many notable accomplishments, which include multiple citywide diversity and inclusion, anti-harassment, and supervisor trainings, organizing the city's involvement in the annual Pride Parade, negotiating over twenty collective bargaining unit contracts, and since becoming Director, overseeing the hiring of four hundred and twenty-five employees. And whereas, Perry is much respected and valued for his integrity, professionalism, excellent problem-solving abilities, and dedication, always going the extra mile for employees, and adept at handling difficult situations with kindness, patience, and fairness. Whereas, coaching and encouraging employees has always been part of Perry's caring character, whether by speaking from the heart or by example. His eagerness to share his vast wealth of knowledge has been greatly appreciated by his staff and others. And whereas, in his capacity as Director of Human Resources, Perry has demonstrated exceptional leadership ability and commitment to his position and the city core values, while encouraging and motivating others to do the same. And whereas, Perry has served the city of Palm Springs faithfully, and we thank him for his tremendous dedication and service to the city. Now, therefore, be it resolved, we, the city council of the city of Palm Springs, California, with deep appreciation of your thirteen years of service with Palm Springs and over thirty years of experience in human resources, do hereby pay special tribute to Perry Madison. Thank you so much for everything you've done for our city."
Thank you, Mayor and Council. David, Marcus, Jeff, and to all the city staff. You know, I want to thank you for the opportunity to serve with you for all these days. You know, it's been everything from the crazy to the amazing, and, you know, I wish everyone the best, to be well, to be happy. And, you know, until we meet again, thank you so much.
And Perry, before you go, I was just wanting to say that it's no easy feat. I mean, when you talk about twenty labor negotiations and all the many, many, many personnel review meetings, and I'll tell you, city government doesn't run unless you've got a personnel director who knows what he's doing and makes it happen. So Perry, thank you so much. I know what you've done, everyone knows what you've done, it's amazing. Wish you the best.
We have one more presentation today, and then we'll break and go into our separate offices to limit gathering. But next, we have a COVID-19 case update on testing sites from Danny. Thank you very much.
Good evening, and congratulations, Madam Mayor, Council. So I have a couple slides, a quick COVID update. The first one, you can see, Anthony, do you have the clicker? Oh, thank you. The first one just shows the Southern California region. I put a call-out box down at the bottom right, so you can see our current percentage for Southern California ICU capacity is all the way down to seven point seven percent. So, I mean, this still means that we have some room in hospitals, and just a reminder, not every ICU patient is a COVID patient. What is more concerning is, when you look at Riverside County, we're down to four point one percent capacity, which is only seventy-two beds across the county. Here in the desert, we have seven ICU beds available among all three hospitals. Desert Regional is actually at capacity, and they've actually executed their surge plan, but then only leave seven beds, or seven ICU beds, at JFK and Eisenhower. So it is pretty concerning. So for a numbers update, you can see the huge spike. This is just since Monday, last week, so for the first to the seventh, there were seventy-five hundred cases in Riverside County. Since Monday, we've had over eighteen thousand. So this should be really hit home to social distance, mask. It's a challenge, because everybody's trying to do their Christmas shopping, but it's important to socially distance, mask, and get tested, which brings us to the last one. We have a new testing site going up at the convention center. It starts Monday. It's going to go all the way through January, and then we'll reevaluate probably mid-January, whether that extends or not. Their goal is to try to get a hundred and fifty tests a day through the convention center. And again, all COVID testing is free. They are going to take insurance information if you have it, but it's not to bill you. So Monday through Friday, twelve hours a day, they're going to test as many people as they can. The goal is one fifty. They would like people to make appointments either at that website, or they can call. And on a more positive note, we have over a hundred thousand masks and seven thousand bottles of hand sanitizer that C-Vep was able to get for local businesses. I've been working with Jay to get those distributed. We're going to pick them up on Tuesday and get them to Main Street and to the Chamber of Commerce, so that way we can make sure there's equitable distribution to local businesses. So that's absolutely no charge to local businesses, so they will have masks available, face shields if they need them, and hand sanitizer. That's all I have, if there's any questions.
Thank you. And Mayor, if I could, there's one other additional thing we'd like to add. One of the things that we've done that most other cities jurisdictions have not is we've -- there's some experimental with the wastewater treatment plant where you can test the amount of COVID in the affluent from the wastewater treatment plant. So we did this, it's obviously voluntary, the science isn't exact, but we have been performing these tests, and we wanted to make sure that people were aware of that. It is on our COVID website, and I'm going to ask Assistant City Manager Marcus Fuller to discuss what those test results actually are and what they mean. Marcus, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As Dr. Reddy mentioned, we took the initiative back in August, seeing some reports of the availability of this sampling and testing, to see if we could track how COVID is prevalent in Palm Springs in our wastewater. This is a graph showing the, basically, the number or copies of the virus per liter of wastewater. That's how they sample and test for that, and you can see it was tracking low through the summer. And then we started to notice some spikes as we got into Halloween, and then, as you can see, there's a significant spike here at the most recently, right after Thanksgiving. So on November thirtieth, we sample Mondays and Tuesdays from the wastewater, so that's capturing a twenty-four-hour sample from Monday to Tuesday and into Wednesday. The latest test result that we got just this afternoon from a Monday sample, as you can see, is a significant spike. Now, that shows the spike increasing from, and these numbers, again, are the copies or number of viruses per liter. It was at three hundred and eighty thousand towards the Thanksgiving weekend, and then after Thanksgiving weekend, that spiked to over nine hundred thousand, and then most recently, up to two and a half million. Now, what does that mean? This is an actual report from the lab. We've engaged with a lab that's in Fort Collins, Colorado. That whole community really was on the forefront of establishing some of this science, and there's other universities throughout the nation doing this. But what it shows is that based on the concentration of COVID in the wastewater, they develop a range of estimates of how many positive cases that might represent. Now, remember, a lot of people are asymptomatic, so they don't know they're positive, but they shed the virus into the sewer system. And so in this case, based on that spike we saw from Monday, they're showing perhaps as many as thirty-one hundred to nearly fourteen thousand positive cases in that wastewater stream. They basically say their best guess is towards the lower end, but in this case, that's as many as almost six thousand positive cases. And of course, that doesn't really compare to the confirmed positive cases, active cases, according to the county in Palm Springs, which is less than five hundred. So we will be continuing to do this and putting it out publicly for the public to basically reinforce the reason why we're currently in a regional shelter-in-place order because of the prevalence of COVID, at least demonstrated in our wastewater. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from City Council on this report? Mayor Protem Middleton.
All right. I want to thank first, the report that we just saw on wastewater, that's something that earlier this summer, a resident reached out to us and said he had heard about this type of testing and that we should do it. And Marcus immediately followed up on that recommendation that came from a local resident. We started putting it together, and now we're seeing this data. The data is scary, and if there are as many as six thousand active cases in Palm Springs today, all of us need to step back and recognize the danger that we are in as a community and as a country. And it is time for individuals to put the face mask on and keep it on, and to socially distance, and to avoid all of those things that we love and want to participate in, but we can't right now. So it's not fun, but we want to save lives, we all want to be here for the holidays next year.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from Council? Seeing none, I agree with your comments, thank you for making them. The cases in Palm Springs are increasing exponentially. I know we are all tired of this. It's difficult. This is another shutdown. I know that there are businesses and residents, and we're all hurting, but this is a matter of life and death. And so we strongly ask all of our residents to take this seriously and do everything you can to follow these orders and stay at home unless it's absolutely necessary. So thank you. Now we will take a five-minute recess as we adjourn to our offices. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So go back to our agenda and restart our meeting. So the next item on the agenda is acceptance of the agenda. The City Council will discuss the order of the agenda, may amend the order, add urgency items, note abstentions or no votes on consent calendar items, or request consent calendar items to be removed for separate discussion. I would like to entertain a motion for acceptance of the agenda. Are there any items, any council member would like removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion and/or vote? Councilmember Garner?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to remove item H and item N as in Nancy.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Middleton?
Thank you, Miss, Madam Mayor. I would like to remove item 1I as in India. And on item 2C, I will be recusing myself as I am a member of the Board of Directors of one of the organizations up for consideration.
Thank you. Item 2C?
2C, as in Charlie.
Thank you. Any other council members like to poll any items or no, no votes? Councilmember Coors?
It's not on a consent calendar item, but I believe this is the right time. I think we need to remove item 5C, request to amend the budget for the City of Palm Springs homeless housing program. Given some new information we got today, we, liaisons, which are the two of us, need to do some more work with the county and some others on that allocation before we bring it to Council for consideration.
Thank you. Any other items to be polled?
Madam Mayor, staff is requesting that the City Council delete item 1T related to development project fee report, as well as item 5C from the agenda. And I would also like to note that there was a revised City Council meeting scheduled distributed to the City Council regarding item 1I.
Thank you. So is there a motion to accept the agenda with the removal of items 1H, 1N, 1I, 1T, removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion? Sorry, 1T is actually deleted from the agenda, 5C removed from the agenda, and then noting Mayor Protem's refusal on 2C. Is there a motion?
So?
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Have a city clerk.
Councilmember Coors?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Oh.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Middleton?
Aye.
Mayor Coors. I'm sorry, Mayor Holstage. Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. The next item is a report of closed session. I'd like to request the city attorney provide a report of the closed session.
Yes, Mayor Holstage and council members and members of the public. The City Council met in closed session to discuss the items that are listed on the agenda. There is no action taken that's required to be reported. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is public testimony that time has been set aside for members of the public to address the City Council on non-public hearing agenda items only. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. You are asked to please begin your time by telling us what agenda item or item you are speaking about. Please note that the testimony for public hearings will be taken at the time of the public hearing. And general public comment for subjects not on the agenda will be taken later in the evening. Tonight, the city clerk will be contacting speakers by telephone. City clerk, can you please begin?
Thank you. The first speaker is going to be David Friedman. Mr. Friedman, you have two minutes to provide your comments and you can begin now.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Holstage, Mayor Protem Middleton, and council members. My name is David Friedman. I am a member of the City Sustainability Commission and Standing Committee on Solar and Green Building. I am speaking on the AB 1236 Implementation Ordinance, Agenda Item 3A. I first want to congratulate Mayor Holstage and Mayor Protem Middleton on your reelections and new positions. I look forward to working with you in the coming year. I'd like to express my support for the ordinance implementing AB 1236, establishing an expedited and streamlined permitting process for electric vehicle chargers, amending the zoning code in accordance with EB 1100 on accessible EV parking spaces. The city's sustainability plan calls on the city to continue to support development of EV infrastructure and charging stations. Together with the zoning code update we adopted in March with provisions encouraging the installation of EV chargers and the city's initiative to install EV chargers that the Office of Sustainability is working on now for your consideration. The city is making good progress in its efforts to reduce local transportation-related emissions, which constitute nearly 25% of the city's GHG emissions, according to the GHG inventory now being finalized by the Office of Sustainability. These measures are also necessary to align the city with safe policy. In 2018, Governor Brown established by executive order a target of 5 million EVs on California roads by 2030. The order also called for the installation of 250,000 publicly available EV charging ports by 2025. Governor Newsom expanded this goal in September when he issued an executive order requiring that all new cars and passenger zero emission by 2035 and all medium and heavy-duty vehicles on the road by zero emission by 2045. I urge you to adopt the ordinance before you this evening. Thank you for your consideration. I am available for any questions you may have.
Thank you and will disconnect.
Thank you.
Bob Heinbaugh, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Mayor Holstage and members of the City Council, I am Robert Heinbaugh, a resident of Palm Springs. I'm speaking in favor of the proposed Tower Energy Market Project, Item 2A on tonight's agenda. There's been a lot, a great deal of discussion regarding the Tower Energy proposal for their proposed market and gas station, which I believe is a great step towards solving one more issue in the northern part of the city. Immediately, six neighborhoods will benefit from the presence of their proposed first-class market. I reiterate, six neighborhoods, let alone other individuals traveling to and through our area. A question my husband and I put forth to members of the council has not been directly answered. That question is, if you as a group refuse to approve the Tower Energy proposal, what alternative is imminently or in the very near future ready to step in and be approved? I believe there should be full transparency if there is another option or options in the works. If there isn't anything else, please tell us that as well. If there isn't another option ready, I see no reason why City Council should hesitate to approve the Tower Energy proposal. Let's move forward and vote favorably for the Tower Market. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you and will disconnect. Paul Henrickson, you're live with Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Dear Mayor Holstage, Mayor Protem Middleton, City Council members Coors, Garner, and Woods, and staff, Paul Henrickson of Palm Springs, regarding item 2A, Tower Market Project. Numerous topics and comments have been already discussed and shared. I'd like to touch on a key point I believe has had little coverage. That is the strong positive visual impact the Tower Market Project will contribute to our six neighborhoods area. The site location is one of the more highly visible locations of our area and at the crossroads of two major thoroughfares leading in and out of our city. A location that has been the site of illegal dumping has looked depressing, bad, and neglected for a very long time. As such, it currently leaves a negative impression. This Tower Market will change all of that and bring pride of place to our six neighborhoods and our city. Our six neighborhoods deserves something nice. Tower Market is willing to bring it, and this all matters. When other community-based services businesses consider sizable investment, like Tower Energy is willing to do now, they will see the Tower Market as a shining example of success in the area. This matters very much to other prospective services-based businesses. Numerous neighbors of ours and we are very grateful to Tower Market for being willing to bring their quality project to our six neighborhoods area of our city. Please vote yes and approve the Tower Market Project today. Thank you very much.
Thank you and will disconnect. Jenny Weisman, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Hi, this is Jenny Weisman from the Pet Ministry and also from New Harmony Habitat. I want to first thank Mayor Coors for his strong and caring leadership and his support of me and my projects. I want to congratulate Madam Mayor Holstage. I was happy to be a small part of your campaign and I look forward to working with you and Mayor Protem Middleton on senior affordable housing. I said I also want to congratulate you from Mario Hernandez and our partners at Environment Protecting Solutions, who wanted to extend their congratulations. I said I didn't have an agenda item and I could have been in the general section. My question is regarding affordable housing. I thought the Desert AIDS Project Housing was on the agenda. I was looking at the timeline for that and what the timeline is for affordable housing, discussions in Palm Springs and streamlining the permit and building process, and when that will be on the agenda, hopefully to the City Council maybe at the next meeting.
Sorry, Ms. Weisman, is, are your comments concluded?
Yes, they are. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Will disconnect. Evrenelle Black, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council citizens. This puppy has been, our tiger has been nipping at our heels for quite some time. It's like a bad penny. It just keeps turning up. Several of us have made it known to you that we aren't interested in having it in our area because we feel that many people that's coming over the freeway, there's many service stations there to take care of that, and there's no need for another service station a block from the one that we already have. Today I went to the Rangel Mirage store, and it's definitely a convenience store. The fruit that they had, I could have put it all in two or three grocery bags except for the watermelons. Also, I found that the prices are expensive, just like a convenience store. You couldn't get a gallon of water anyplace for 99 cents, and there it's $1.49. A small candy bar is $1.59. It's a place that you would only go to pick up an item or two until you could get to someplace to get something better. It, I wonder, is it the representative from the market, or is it the City Council that keeps throwing the rock and hide in their hands? That's why you keep coming back. We don't want it here in our area. Thank you very much.
Thank you and will disconnect. Dieter Crawford, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Congratulations, Mayor Holstage. Good afternoon, Council and staff. My name is Dieter Crawford. I'm Vice President of Desert Island Gateway Estates Community Action Association. I also worked as a clinical community health worker with Desert Clinic Pain Institute. I want to speak on the Tower Market proposal tonight. We've been fighting these three desert issues for a while up in Desert Island. In 2014, we conducted a community health assessment with Desert Healthcare District along Melinda that identified community members' concerns for a lack of a nearby grocery store. We know this area has high rates of diabetes, high blood pressure, obesity, and substance use disorder. We've also been working with Desert Healthcare District, Human Empire Health, and Listari to create a health access point in this area because we know this area lacks access to a health point. And one of my concerns was just, we know we've been working on this food desert thing for a while, and we were just concerned that the neighborhood was never consulted whenever Tower Market or the city came up with the plans for the store. We don't think Tower Market is a good fit for the area. We don't need another liquor store. I know they modified their business plan and added more grocery items, but we just don't think that our area should be a pilot program. In the staff report, we saw that, you know, this area suffers some high risk of childhood poverty, and also high risk of overall poverty. Childhood poverty is 34%. Childhood obesity is 26%. So we know that this census strike is underserved and lack of resources. It's not just Desert Island, it's all the surrounding neighborhoods. There's no grocery stores, health centers, or financial institutions in this area, but there's multiple cannabis dispensaries, liquor stores, and tobacco outlets. We know Maryland's coming in and also Watermark Homes, but we don't want to settle for Tower Market. We think there's a, go ahead.
Your time is over?
Okay, thank you. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Charlie Irvin, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Hello, this is Charlie Irvin. I'm calling in regards of the Tower Market. So we have been going backwards and forwards here with the Tower Market for quite a while. It's been going from the planning commission to the City Council, then study session, and back to City Council. So I would like to say that if we're going to approve this Tower Market, that we need to have a specific plan done for that area of Palm Springs and Desert Island. We've never had a specific plan to where we are clearly where we see what the community and what the people in that area are looking for. It's been about 20 years that we've had no movement with any economic growth in that area there. And I just think it's time for the City of Palm Springs to take that situation serious and get us some economic growth, get us some banks, some real grocery stores there in that area. So I would hope that some of our district representatives for District One and Two, you guys actually I would hope that some of our district representatives for District One and Two, you guys actually pull this item and put together a specific plan, and let's get everything taken care of and make sure that we have something positive going on in that neighborhood and get some economic growth in Desert Island and the northern part of town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ervin. Ginny Foote, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you very much. I first want to start by thanking Jeff Coors for the incredible job he did as mayor. And congratulations, of course, to Councilmember Middleton on her hard-fought election. And Christie, I am so proud to see you as the first woman mayor leading our city. And thank you for the mention in the women's leadership title for you did. Always a quick thing on consent calendar, I was born in, I think Councilmember Grace may have told it, we need to remove the senior, reference to senior and proof of age to be any low-income person. And then on item 2A, the power market, this is such a difficult issue, but it is a market that I believe is really needed up there. We for years have tried to get a supermarket in that area, even when including the building of both of Maryland and the other project up there. They're still, we went to State Brothers, we talked to Ralphs, we talked to all the supermarkets over the years, and no one was wanting to go there. It's important to have a market up there, and I think that what they've done is improved what they had to begin with. So I would urge you to vote yes on the Tower Market. And then number 5C, I'm glad that you removed it. I think it needs to have a greater study, and I'd be glad to talk to you about it. Thank you.
Ms. Foote?
Yes.
The first item that you referred to, you were referring to item one in dog licensing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye-bye. Mayor Holstich, that does conclude public comment. We did have Speaker Joanne Crawford, who we attempted to call three times but had no answer. And I do want to note for those who are speaking later in the evening, just for clarifications, we take public comment for non-agenda items at approximately 9:00 PM, so we did not miss you. We will be calling you later tonight.
Thank you, Anthony. The next item on the agenda is City Council Subcommittee and City Managers' Comments and Reports. Would any council member like to make a comment at this time? Councilmember Garner.
Thank you. A few things. One of the things I wanted to just raise for our council to think about, for our residents to think about, is traffic and speeding in our city. I've had lots of discussions this year with residents who are concerned about traffic, mostly speeding, and it's in the more neighborhood areas, you know, Gionatri, Sunrise, the Saccino, San Rafael. And one of the things that keeps coming up is that we can't just put speed bumps all over the city to solve the problem. There's got to be a little bit more that's done there. So I just wanted to raise that as something that if maybe in 2021, we can discuss further to kind of figure out what we can do to just be better neighbors to each other and not speed through our neighborhood so that people can comfortably and safely walk down the street. I also wanted to highlight that we have a event with Santa and Hot Cocoa. I think Erin's going to put up an image of that, which I hope, because I have all the relevant information. It looks like my computer is frozen. So hopefully that image is up there because I can't see it. My screen is frozen.
Yes, it is.
But I wanted to just let everybody know about this event that's been put on by Parks and Rec. You can also follow our Parks and Recreation Department on Facebook. If you look at City of Palm Springs Parks and Recreation, that's where they are on Facebook, and on Instagram. That's where they put all of this different information for our community. So hopefully you can join for the Santa and Hot Cocoa event on December 18th. All that information is available. The last thing that I wanted to say is that it's just been an absolute pleasure and an honor to serve on city council this last year. I certainly didn't expect that this would be my first year in a pandemic, but it's been truly a privilege to work with our city staff. I'm looking forward to doing it again next year. So thank you so much to our outgoing mayor, Mayor Coors, for all of your leadership, and I'm very excited about Christie being our new woman mayor. Thank you all.
Thank you, Councilmember Garner, Councilmember Coors.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So a few things since our last meeting. We've had several meetings of our COVID reopening slash re-closing task force, which Mayor Holstich and I serve on. I think what's been really interesting is, you know, that is made up of sort of the heads of numerous organizations, nonprofit, real estate, retail, restaurants, bars, hotels, vacation rentals. And it's just been really helpful to help get the word out on the new rules. There was, one thing that was really clear was the initial state order caused a lot of confusion and was hard for folks to know exactly what was allowed and what wasn't, especially when it came to short-term lodging, which is not allowed other than COVID-related purposes or quarantine purposes. And as you heard from the numbers earlier, given there's not a single ICU bed available at Desert Regional, the hospital in Palm Springs, having people come here is not a good idea at this point. We are truly in an unprecedented situation. It is multiples of time worse than it's ever been, as you can see in those numbers. And, you know, as Mayor Pro Tem pointed out, the ICU beds aren't just for COVID. I think you pointed out, someone pointed out, the ICU beds aren't just for COVID. People, heart attacks, strokes, people getting car accidents, other things. And so it's really important that people follow the rules. We've gotten asked for lots of exceptions to the rules, noting that some cities aren't enforcing them the way we are. But our first priority is protect the health and safety of our residents and the people who work in our city. We are going to work in partnership with our businesses and others. This is going to be a hard time for everyone, but we're going to get through this together as we did with the first major shutdown. So just be safe out there. And, you know, everyone on the task force was on board, the need to really get through this quicker, because as soon as we get the ICU bed numbers back, we'll be able to open more up. So if we all do our part, we're going to get more things opened faster. Numerous tourism meetings that I've been to over the last month since our last council meeting, and the main thing I just want to share is both our Bureau of Tourism, which runs out of the convention center, and the Greater Palm Springs Bureau of Tourism have stopped all their out-of-area marketing to get people to come here. They're doing some long-term, you know, efforts, working on contracts for conventions next year and years in the future. But they've stopped that, and they've turned to marketing, asking people who live in the valley and live in Palm Springs to do takeout and delivery from our local restaurants, to please make that effort, to buy at local stores. You can buy online on so many of them. We really need to help our local businesses at this time. And I know it's very convenient to order online, as I have done, from that giant warehouse in Seattle. But when you can order things from a local business, you're actually helping people keep their jobs and pay their rent and keep their business alive. So please try and do that to the extent you can. It's just so important right now that we're all in there to support it. At the last Greater Palm Springs Convention Visitors Bureau, I was elected the chair, so I wanted to share that. I want to thank Laquinta Mayor Linda Evans, who has done a great job for six years in that position, and nominated me as chair, and Councilmember Gary Gardner from Desert House Springs as vice chair. So it'll be a good opportunity for the city and for us to continue that great partnership we have with the CVB. Last week, we had the annual State of the City, which you can watch on the website as well. I want to first thank Nona Watson in the Chamber of Commerce, who hosts this every year for us, and they do such great work in hoping to make it happen. And I also want to really thank, you know, our city staff. Every year for the State of the City, our city staff pull together PowerPoints and facts and figures and all the data that I got to present. And Amy Blaisdell does so much work on the videos and the communication, and Aaron Brown on all the technology. And so I just want to thank all of them. City City doesn't happen without the amazing staff in our city and at the chamber working together, make it happen. And I was so thrilled this year, as I was hoping to do in January in person, but to have the entire council participate because it's the State of the City, it's not the State of the Mayor, and to have our senior staff, our police chief, our fire chief, our city manager. I just think it really gave a flavor for the diversity of things we're doing on the council. So thank you to my colleagues and staff in the chamber for making it so successful. And finally, there was a meeting of Desert Community Energy, which is our local nonprofit utility, and there's another meeting coming up in about 11 days. I'm also chair of that board, and I want to, you know, this went into effect in April, so we're about seven, eight months into this. And I really want to share sort of the initial results of this and then share some information on actions at the last meeting. So we'll go to the next slide. So the majority of our residents and businesses are on the 100% carbon-free plan from Desert Community Energy. And just in those seven to eight months, we have reduced our metric tons of CO2 emissions. 72,381 metric tons have been reduced from the environment, which is the equivalent of having 15,000 cars off the road for that time period. So really significant impact that we're doing our part as we pledge to do to fight climate change here in Palm Springs. Next slide. For those who, because they want to or they need to pay a lower rate, there's the Desert Community Energy Desert Saver Plan. Now, that's the lowest-cost choice of any provider you can get in the city of Palm Springs. And our residents and businesses in those first seven to eight months have saved close to $200,000 on that plan. So it's really having a great impact, whichever plan you're on, over the equivalent Southern California Edison plans. And just a few other things to share, you know, one, this is a not-for-profit, right? There's no profit being made like in a private or semi-public utility. Any money that is generated goes right back into the ratepayers, into community investment for the ratepayers, whether it's through insulation or rebates on energy-efficient appliances or lower rates, as we were able to do this summer when rates skyrocketed. We signed contracts, there are going to be three contracts for locally-generated green renewable energy, all in Palm Springs, that are going to get kicked off for a new wind farm that's going to be built for Desert Community Energy, creating over 100 construction jobs and about six to 10 full-time permanent jobs, all good-paying jobs here in Palm Springs. And of course, it's local control. We get to make the decisions. So I wanted to share that, and I'm going to share that regularly as we're now getting the kind of data we can share with folks. You know, Palm Springs, what we passed as a city was 100% carbon-free would be the default and no more than 10% higher than SCE's non-carbon-free rate. So that's going to be looked at on a roll in 12 months. We have stayed within that. Mayor Pro Tem Middleton and I have been on calls each month as the rates, you know, are looked at. And also Desert Community Energy, we're still a minimal of 1% savings. We're thinking that'll be more over the next year, and the carbon-free will be less than the 10%, and we'll keep those updated as that moves forward. So I just wanted to share all of that with everyone, and thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Coors. Other council comments or reports?
Madam Mayor?
Seeing none. Thank, oh, City Manager, please.
Yes, thank you. Two brief things. First, Patrick Talarico, I'd like to bring up just once to just brief council quickly on a sustainability incentive. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I just wanted to quickly announce a couple of new programs that we are launching to help people, to help fund some sustainability efforts, both on the residential side and business side. The first program is Sustainability Scholarship Program for businesses, and that's going to be available to all licensed businesses in good standing with the city. Up to $750 for various environmental-related programs and projects like EV charger installation and energy-saving and water-saving upgrades. But most importantly, it's to help people comply with a lot of the requirements that we have and the growing requirements we have, especially around organics management and, of course, the leapblower ordinance. The second program is for residents. It's a rebate program for conducting home energy assessments, and up to $100 is available for residents who want to do that. And those assessments often lead to much bigger savings for other upgrades that you can do to your home, so we're pleased to offer that. And all of the information about these programs is available on our website at yoursustainablecity.com. And so if people want to find out more about them, all the information is there. And just a quick note, we are also in the final stages of discussions with a preferred provider to expand our EV charging network, and I hope to bring that to council next month, and it's sort of related to an item later on the agenda. Thanks.
Thank you. And Mayor, thank you, Patrick. And Mayor, if I could, one more quick item, and if we could, this is exciting. Our new website is now live, the new city's website. If we could bring it up, please. So if I could show you what we've got, this is our new city website. As you can see, it's different in color, it's different in feel. We've tried to make it much more intuitive with the buttons for what we believe are the most, where people are looking most inquiries. We have tabs, we have information, calendars. And so, for example, if we have government, we go to the city clerk, and of course, obviously, we'll have all the information there. And it's, the goal of this was to be much more intuitive and easy to manage. And one other department I want to show you quickly is human resources. And you'll see, like, so for example, job opportunities and things like that. So we've tried to make it much easier. And I would note, one other thing, we also have the ability to, I'll show you here, there's a lot of interesting, as you know, making it great with some pictures that we have. So the whole look and feel is to be a different experience. And then also, finally, we also have the ability to go to Spanish, Espanol. So of course, it's translated, and this is an added feature that we have as well. So we're very excited about our new website and would like to introduce it. And we'd also like to thank the OnePS, our neighborhood organizations, for their input in helping us to make this a better website. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Ready. Moving to the next item is our consent calendar. So I will entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar without items 1H, 1I, 1N. Without those, those are pulled for separate discussion, and item 1TE is removed from the agenda. Do I have a motion and a second, please?
I make the motion.
Motion by Councilmember Garner, seconded by?
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem Middleton. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Middleton.
Hi.
Councilmember Coors.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Hi.
Mayor Holstich.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. So the first item polled is item 1H. Can I have a staff report, please?
Madam Mayor, this was a report that was submitted by the Chair of the Arts Commission. It's a receive and file, and if there's some specific questions on it, we'd be happy to address it.
Thank you. This is pulled by Councilmember Garner.
Thank you, Mayor. I just pulled this because it is a report back from our Arts Commission about all of the work that they've been doing during this pandemic and before. I really encourage folks to take a look at it. And of course, you've probably seen all of the different benches that have been painted downtown. They're going to be doing it at the airport as well. There's just so much art going up in our city, and our Arts Commission has really been... been, uh, moving forward on this and, uh, being bold with their, their requests and their actions and I, I really appreciate that. Uh, I know we also have, um, uh, Shonda Fauve, who's been doing, uh, videos with local artists as well, that she puts up on, on Facebook. Uh, she's one of our Arts Commissioners. It's just a really cool and fun, fun work that we're seeing all around this city. Uh, so definitely take a look at, at all of the stuff that they're doing. Thank you to the Arts Commission.
Thank you, Councilmember Garner. I love these benches, it brings so much joy to the city and the time that we desperately need it. Um, so our businesses and Main Street who are supporting some of these benches, thank you so much. Um, I think this is excellent work, um, in making our city much more beautiful. Uh, any other comments on this item? Or we'll take a, um, motion to, we don't need a motion to accept it, it's just receive and file, right?
Typically, we do take a motion.
I'll move.
A motion by, um, Councilmember Coors. Where a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Garner. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Coors.
Yes.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Holstich.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. The next item is item 1I. This was pulled by Mayor Proton Middleton.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I pulled this because I wanted to make note that, uh, staff has come back with a slightly revised, uh, schedule for 2021, uh, which involves, uh, changing the date of our meeting schedule, our September 23rd to September 30th, in order to be able to accommodate attendance at the League of California Cities Annual Conference, hoping that we actually can be attending in person, uh, by September of next year. Uh, and we're fortunate, September's one of those months that has five Thursdays, so actually works out fairly well. Uh, the second date that has changed is a cancellation of the meeting that would have been scheduled for December 23rd of next year. Uh, and I think most of us, uh, would like to be able to give both ourselves and staff and our residents, uh, most of the, uh, Christmas week off. Uh, that is a full 12 months away, so if, uh, needs change, we can, uh, take and, uh, make accommodations to add a meeting in December of next year if needed. Uh, but lastly, I want to thank, uh, uh, call attention to and thank staff, uh, for noting and have scheduling the May, uh, 13 meeting, rescheduling it to May 6th in order to accommodate, uh, the end of Ramadan, which is an incredible, a very holy day, uh, for our Muslim residents, uh, in the city. And I am appreciative of seeing again, uh, that Palm Springs is reaching out to people across our community and trying to ensure that, uh, everyone has an opportunity to fully participate at all times. So thank you. With that, I would make a motion to approve the, uh, revised, uh, schedule of city council meetings for 2021.
Thank you. There's a motion by Mayor Proton Middleton, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Coors. Um, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Proton Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Coors.
Yes.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Mayor Holstich.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. The next item that was pulled for separate discussion is item 1N, a resolution amending fees for dog licensing. This was pulled by Councilmember Garner.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so what we have, and I don't think we need a staff report, I can explain it. Um, what we have here is just the license fees for dogs at the animal shelter. This is just an update of their fees, we've seen this before. Uh, I just wanted to make, uh, two amendments to this, uh, in what we have in front of us. It should just say that anyone that is low-income, uh, pays a, a different fee. It, currently it's of low-income seniors. It's just anyone who can show valid proof of, of, um, of being low-income will get the proposed fees at $10. Um, and then the other is that the animal shelter requested that this fees are effective, uh, July 1, 2021, uh, just to give time for people to adjust to them, uh, but also in, in light of, uh, the current circumstances. So, but we do want to at least get it moved forward so that that can start to be advertised to the residents.
Thank you, Councilmember Garner. Are there any questions or comments on this item? Or is there a motion to approve, um, adopt the resolution, um, for dog licensing fees?
I'll move.
A motion made by Councilmember Coors, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Proton Middleton, um, can I have a roll call vote?
And just, just for clarification, that's with the amendments proposed by Councilmember Garner?
Correct.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilmember Coors.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Mayor Holstich.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero as amended.
Thank you. The next agenda item is item 2A, consideration of a request for Councilmember review of an action taken by the Planning Commission to deny a request by Tower Energy Group for an amendment to the College Park specific plan to change the land use designation to mixed-use, multi-use and conditional use permit to allow the construction of a 5,343-square-foot grocery store and accompanying fueling station at 3299 North Indian Canyon Drive. I'd like to ask for a staff report, please.
Good evening, uh, Madam Mayor and council members. As you recall, this item was reviewed at your November 12th city council meeting, um, and the application, the applications that you considered were an amendment to the specific plan to conditional use permits for the 5,000-square-foot grocery market and fueling station with 12 pumps. You also evaluated the project under the Food Desert Overlay Ordinance. At that meeting, the council directed the, uh, the council closed the public hearing and directed the applicant to meet with the subcommittee to further discuss and modify the project floor plan, operation and design. On November 24th, the city council subcommittee, uh, reviewed the project with the applicants and, uh, asked for some specific requests in terms of its operation, um, specifically in terms of the display and merchandise areas, that there be a minimum of 15% perishable groceries, a minimum of 30% staple foods, and a maximum of 20% alcohol, which would include liquor, uh, wine and beer. Uh, additionally, there was a request that city staff conduct a review annually of the merchandise display to ensure that the proposed floor plan remained consistent with this, with these thresholds. Uh, there was also a request that the applicant obtain and maintain the SNAP permit from the U.S. Department of Agriculture, as well as, uh, a requirement that they, uh, both conditional use permits are required as a part of the operation, um, to be maintained. Otherwise, it could be grounds for revocation if one was not, uh, continued. And finally, in terms of the operation, that there be a minimum of five shopping carts. So what you have before you here on the screen is, um, the floor plan that the applicant has submitted since the packet went out. So this is, uh, the current display that they are proposing. You can see the shopping carts located at the top right of the floor plan and then the various merchandise display areas. They've also provided images of what they expect to provide within the store. In terms of the project design, the city council and the applicant discussed moving the building further north, um, towards San Rafael. Some discussion about providing outdoor seating and dining areas with a covered pergola. Um, a request to widen the sidewalk from San Rafael to the building and also a request to add pedestrian pathway on the west side of the driveway that leads from the Santa Catalina Road to the building. Uh, there's also requests to incorporate architecturally-compatible lighting on the building and add additional bike racks. So what you see on the screen now is the original design on the left and then the revised design on the right. You can see the building has shifted slightly north on the right image. Um, there have also provided a, a pedestrian pathway from Santa Catalina, as you can see on the right, where the arrows are indicating the new pathway is proposed. And the, just above the store, and I'll show you a, a larger image on, um, above it on the north, is where the pergola and, and outdoor dining space will be located, as well as the additional bike racks. Um, in this image, you can see, uh, an enlarged view of where the store is located and it also includes the wider sidewalk from San Raf- San Rafael. The applicant has provided some additional image as it relates to the proposed exterior lighting fixtures on the building, as well as within the arcade at the entry. And so those are shown on the screen here. Um, they are architecturally-compatible lighting as requested by the council. So the council's options tonight to consider are either approving the project as submitted, um, approving it with additional conditions that the council wishes to, um, include on the, uh, project or the applications, or the council may deny the applications based on, um, findings of inconsistency, um, for a conditional use permit. That concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is here and I am also happy to answer any of the questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. And just a note for the record and people watching, um, we did hold, we opened and closed the public hearing on November 12th, 2020, and we continue the matter to this evening and that's why no public testimony was taken tonight at, since tonight's meeting, um, and the applicant is available, as staff said. So are there any questions for staff at this time? Seeing none, I know there was a subcommittee here, would you like to make a subcommittee report as well? Or we can just move into discussion?
I'm, I'm happy to make a subcommittee report. Um, so the subcommittee met with the applicant and it, and it was an amicable, um, discussion. Um, the focus of the, the discussion was basically, are you a convenience store? Are you a grocery store? Are you a hybrid in between the two? And, um, the discussion was quite lively between that and they, really, the applicant knew their calculations and what they could and couldn't provide. And condition on page four, condition, uh, CC8, we came up with a minimum of 15% of the display shall be devoted, devoted to perishable products, groceries such as meats, dairies and produce. So, um, that was more than they were actually willing to originally, um, agree to and they agreed to 14%. We upped it to 15%. And then 30% shall be divided, devoted to other staple foods, which are dry goods, breads, pastas, beans, cereals and whatnot. And then, um, um, Councilmember Garner got them to reduce the amount of beer, wine and alcohol to a maximum of 20%. The actual ordinance allows 30%. Um, we also, the applicant agreed to basically allow them to, um, meet any supplemental nutrition assistance program, SNAP or food stamps. Somebody can shop there with the use of food stamps. Um, on top of just what the merchandise would be in the store itself, we did a little bit of work on the access to the store so pedestrians and bicyclists could access it much easier than what was originally proposed. Those were some minor tweaks to the site plan. And with that, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Garner for any additional comments.
Thank you. Uh, that about sums up that, the meeting that we had. Um, we also had another presentation to, uh, community and neighborhood organization, um, as well as just been speaking with many residents on this issue to get their input. Um, and it is definitely a very divided, uh, viewpoint, I think, if accurate to say. Um, I, from District One residents, I've heard more in opposition to the project than in favor, but I've certainly heard plenty of people in, um, District One and District Two who are in favor of the project as well. Um, so I'm, I'm just interested in hearing discussion from council.
Thank you. Other comments and discussion from council members? Um, Councilmember Coors?
Uh, well, thank you to both Councilmember Garner and Councilmember Woods. Um, this is definitely improvement and, um, you know, I think one of the key things, in addition to getting, um, the commitment on the amount of, um, space for fresh, uh, produce and other, other things in here, um, and I guess it may be a staff question or from one of you, um, it's exactly how that review will move forward, right? Uh, over each year. Because one of the concerns, I think, we all voiced last time was, you know, we don't want this to be what it, what is now being presented and then a year from now, it's something very different. Uh, so I'd love to get just what your sense was. I also do want to, before we do that, thank the developer for being willing to meet and have these discussions. I know COVID made, it's not roll out the way it should have and I know COVID was part of that, but it's important, you know, for all developers to really meet with the community first. Uh, and I think, um, I'm glad that happened and I appreciate their willingness to sit down as well. So I don't know if one of you knows or if, um, Mr. Newell, if you want to share sort of how that process would work? Councilmember Garner, do you have?
Um, I, just as far as the applicant, the applicant stated that they were, um, this was what they wanted to, to do moving forward. They wanted to provide, um, a kind of hybrid market convenience store at this location, um, and that they were committed to selling those products. However, Councilmember Woods and I asked that, um, if we were to approve the project, that we, um, attach this to the CUP. And so if they stop selling the percentages that they stated that they will sell, uh, that the CUP could be revoked. Um, obviously, the five of us are not going to be here forever, so that'll still be at the discretion of, uh, whoever is on council at that time, should that occur. Um, but that was, um, one of the things that we discussed at the meeting.
Great, thank you. That is helpful. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That was my question.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mayor Proton Middleton.
Thank you. Uh, first, I, I want to thank, uh, Councilmember Garner and Councilmember Woods for, uh, doing the work here. Uh, this, uh, I know was not an easy, uh, assignment to, uh, to take on, uh, and I appreciate, uh, your efforts. I think this has come back.